Welcome to Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners's Public Hearing on our agenda. Where are we at? First public hearing on our budget. Okay. And millage. Okay. That's good. All right. Thanks. So with that, can we have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barnett, will you please lead us in our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance? If you're able to, please rise.
Yes, Mayor. We ask you, God, to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do their work in the best way possible, to benefit those we serve, and to leave to our children a better world. Please give us the wisdom and vision to plan adequately and act correctly to achieve these ends. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I have it.
We have a second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Also, is there been proof of publication? We have proof of publication. It's in the packet. Okay, thank you. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Woodward, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Under TRIM, we are first required to read into the record the percentage increase in millage over rollback rate and specific purposes for ad valorem tax increases. Mrs. Baker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, by all members of the board. On page three, in accordance with the TRIM bill, the board of county commissioners shall hold hearings on the intended budget and proposed millage rate. As indicated in the TRIM bill, the first substantive issue to discuss shall be the increase in the millage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget, if any, and the specific purpose of which ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. On page four, Palm Beach County, countywide proposed millage rate of 4.5000 is 6.94% over the rollback rate. This requires a supermajority vote.
Palm Beach County Library District proposed millage rate of 0.5491 is 12.06% over the rollback rate. This requires a supermajority vote. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU proposed millage rate of 3.4581 is 12.03% over the rollback rate. This requires a supermajority vote. Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire Rescue MSTU proposed millage rate of 1.7879 is 7.22% over the rollback rate. Palm Beach County aggregate proposed millage rate of 6.2936 is 6.88% over rollback rate. Palm Beach County countywide voted debt millage rate is 0.0188. Palm Beach County library voted debt millage rate is 0.0108. The increase over rollback revenue is as follows. Under countywide, the sheriff net tax increase is 53.8 million. The increase in other constitutional officers, including judicial, is 16.5 million. Increase in BCC operations net of revenues is 28.7 million. Increase in nondepartmental operations is 10.5 million. Increase in reserves, 105 million. Increase in major revenues in gas tax, 36.2 million. Increase in capital projects, 25.6 million. Decrease in debt service is 2.8 million. Decrease in other funding sources, 3.4 million. Increase in the beginning balance brought forward is 102 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate, CRA rollback adjustment, and tax loss from reevaluations by the Value Adjustment Board is 17.6 million, for a total increase in countywide of $84,762,369. County library, increase in library operations net of revenues, 4.7 million. Increase in reserves, 3.1 million. Increase for transfer to library improvement expansion fund, 6.3 million. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, 3.7 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 1.3 million, for a total increase in the county library Fire Rescue MSTU, increase in fire rescue operations net revenues, 41.8 million. Increase for transfers to capital project fund, 4.4 million. Increase in reserves, 13.2 million. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, 9.1 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate, CRA rollback adjustment, and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 6.5 million, for a total increase in the Fire Rescue MSTU of $43,816,104. The Jupiter Fire MSTU, increase in fire rescue operations net revenues, 1.9 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 49,000, for a total increase of $1,911,038. The FY '24 budget highlights includes, the countywide budget is balanced with a millage rate of 4.5 mills, which is a reduction from fiscal year '23 rate of 4.7150 mills. This requires a supermajority vote. Other than the amendments included in this package, there are no other proposed changes. Total gross budget is 7.9 million, of which 2.2 billion is the general fund. The budget includes 6% across-the-board pay adjustment and a net increase of 66 new BCC positions, 23 are avalorem funded, 44 are non avalorem funded. The avalorem new capital funding equates to 84.6 million primarily renewal and replacement projects. Increase of 12 million for the supervisor of elections, net increase of 53.8 million for the sheriff, decrease of 9.1 million over original estimate for tax collector due to the completion of the North County Service Project. Mayor, that concludes my com-
All right. Thank you.
I thought I did eight.
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry. Page eight contains a summary of proposed transfers amendments. The transfers and amendments do not result in increased property taxes. And now I will turn it over to you.
All right. So we are going to be moving to public comment. If you have not turned in a card, I'm going to ask you to get them in expeditiously because we don't want to be interrupting and taking additional cards. Each person will be given three minutes. And so this is public comment on the total countywide funds budget, dependent district budget, and proposed budget amendments. So if you can keep your remarks to those areas, we would most appreciate it. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Moreno, who will be calling the speakers, and Vice Mayor, who will be working our time clock for us tonight.
Thank you. We have several speaking cards, so if you would take both podiums, please, that would be great. David Wood, followed by Gabrielle Fox, Janine Milam, and Nikki Brown. Those are the first four cards I have. Go right, go right ahead, sir.
Hello, my name's David. Is this on? Hello, my name is David Wood. Just on the general budget here, I just, I don't understand why any taxes are going to be increased at all in this period of time when people are struggling, people can't even buy groceries for gosh sakes. I don't, I don't know why on earth this is the time to increase your tax revenue in any area. And I don't understand why the SOE's budget isn't on all this stuff. But in the SOE's budget, last year was 24,000 and change, 24 million and change. And this year, they're increasing it by $10 million. It's a 45% increase over last year, or which I can't even imagine what it's all about because, I mean, there was a, there was a voting bill passed, and the voting bill actually is probably going to restrict citizens' access to the whole voting system. There'll be less transparency, and the only thing I can think of, they need this increase to keep the citizens out, to stop them from seeing what's happening. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Gabrielle Fox, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. As the gentleman just stated, one of my biggest concerns is the SOE budget. I've spoken to you before about Florida elections and the fact that although I know it is not your area to, you know, pass bills or handle election affairs, I know that it is your area to fund the SOE, obviously. There are many of my constituents and I who feel that our elections, since new systems have been implemented, they're no longer secure, and we no longer have faith in our election systems, and I don't think it's a partisan issue either. When we have machines that are intra-connected to the internet, as the governor of Georgia mentioned the other day on, that was widely nationally shared, if it's connected to the internet, it can be hacked. The SOE budget asking for an increase by 30% is concerning. One of those, one of the breakdowns that I read was simply for wages and salaries for early voting. Why do we need 10 days of early voting? I mean, for over 200 years, we never had such a thing. We never had machines connected to the internet. All of this is costing the taxpayers money, yet they don't feel secure or safe with it. So why is it still being funded? And that is your area, so I am holding you accountable for that. Although you're only one county, you're a major county. One of the budget items, and having a background in accounting, that I noticed that jumped out at me was the library budget. I don't know if you all really pick through these budgets, but the library budget, if you take the 17 branch locations that exist in Palm Beach County, and you divide it by 12 months of the year, each library is getting $410,000 a month. Do you know that? For what? I mean, maybe I need to switch professions and become a librarian, I don't know. But this budget needs to be thoroughly gone through. Everything needs to be audited and accounted for in detail, not this sort of vague breakdown that, that the citizens have been provided, and perhaps even you have been provided. I don't know what you've been provided. That's all.
Janine, followed by Nikki Brown, KJ Meckert, and Todd Buffington.
Hello, I'm Janine Milam. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm a fairly new resident to West Palm Beach in Florida, but I went through the budget for the supervisor of elections with a fine-tooth comb in detail, and I compared it to the 2020 budget, because that was the last presidential election, and we want to compare apples to apples. Granted that there's been inflation, but not 100% inflation. If we've really got 100% inflation, then we've got other problems than the budget. But let me point out a couple things for you. First of all, the budget's doubled since 2020, actually $4.3 million more since 2020. 1.8 million of that is for data processing software. Didn't they already purchase the software? By the way, I'm a software engineer. This is an exorbitant amount, needs to be looked into. What kind of contracts are they signing? Are they up and up? There's a category called MAP Sup-Opper, which is up 1,210%. It's increased since 2020 by 1.6 million dollars. I would like some justification for that. I don't see anything in the budget allocated to voter roll cleanup. I think most people would like to see our voter rolls cleaned up, but there doesn't seem to be. They can ask for all this money for all these other things, but they can't ask for any money to clean our voter rolls up. I looked at the salaries, and not counting benefits, they have doubled and increased by 4.3 million dollars. Now, I'm aware that they're asking for 10 more employees. So considering some raises for everybody who's already employed, that still looks like around $400,000 a year per new employee. So if you're taking resumes, I'll apply. That's very concerning. Also, I noticed that the postage increased by 3.5 million. That's a 368% increase. Postage? We're not talking about printing, or material, or collateral, or anything like that. That's just postage. Why is it going up 3.5 million dollars? And that turns out to be $4.74 per active registered voter. But then printing and graphics has gone up 1.9 million, which is $4.62 per active registered voter. Now, one thing I noticed, our supervisor of elections, Wendy Link, she's got her picture on absolutely everything she sends out, and all plastered all over her website. I checked other SOE websites from around the state and our partners nearby, none of them have their pictures on their page. So are these postage and printing and graphics going to be funding Wendy Link's reelection campaign? Something to consider. A lot of people are moving to Florida, and most of them are leaving, is that me out, timeout? People are moving down here to get away from their, their poor government. Let's not do to Florida what they've done in other states.
Thank you very much.
Nikki Brown, followed by KG Meckert, followed by Todd Buffington, and then Shawna Ostervitz.
Hi. My name is Nikki Brown. I'm up here to represent Palm Tram, and I'm also the ambassador of Palm Tram, and I would like to give all the commissioners, I'd like to give you guys an update on Palm Tram service. The holiday hours have picked up incredibly. I'm talking about, I wrote this on Labor Day, and the ridership, I'll tell you, is outstanding. I mean, and you guys will be very thankful about how this holiday service has picked up. I've never seen anything like this. And another thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that, you know, I know that a lot of people say that, well, when they have to stop and have the county take care of, like, right now, where I'm at, I don't know where, who's paying for that, the cleanup. Right now, that we got trees and shrubs and all that stuff. Just basically, I called, called Labor Day, and they said they're going to have office jobs, but it is pathetic, so you guys need to take a look at it. This is a record-based place, if I have you. You guys need to take a look at it. I hope you guys can do that. And also, I bet you guys can take a ride on the Palm Tram buses, so I'd like to see you guys ride the Palm Tram buses. Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would love to see you on there. Ms. Baker has already done it, but I would love to have Commissioner Sacks, I know you'll be there, and Mark Bernard, I know you'll be there, so I would love for you guys to take a day and take a ride, and see how the taxpayer dollars are being spent. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. KJ Meckert?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Kirsten Meckert, aka KJ, and I live in Palm Beach Gardens. Earlier this year, I sent an email to the supervisor of elections' general inbox requesting an update to a public records request that I had sent. To my surprise, I received a response, an out-of-office response, from a consulting firm, Cornerstone Solutions. Being new to the area and new to politics, I decided to research Cornerstone Solutions. What I discovered is Cornerstone Solutions is clearly a partisan Democrat political consulting firm, as evidenced by newspaper articles, as well as my extensive research into PACs that were formed by Cornerstone Solutions and following the money. Why is there a partisan Democrat political consulting firm monitoring the inbox of my supervisor of elections? In August of 2020, Cornerstone Solutions represented Wendy Link to get her elected as supervisor of elections. In fact, there is a newspaper article stating Wendy Link received more votes than any other candidate on the ballot, even more than the sheriff, because I vote for supervisor of elections and not my sheriff. Sorry, not. Shortly thereafter, as revealed through email exchanges, Cornerstone Solutions worked with the supervisor of elections to obtain the Zuckerbucks grant worth $6.8 million. From October 2020 to November 2020, Cornerstone Solutions was awarded $3.4 million in Zuckerbucks for their consulting services. It does not stop there, however. As indicated by invoices, Cornerstone Solutions has remained on our county's payroll. In 2021, Cornerstone Solutions was paid approximately $490,000. In 2022, Cornerstone was paid approximately $421,000. That totals nearly an additional $1 million in two years. To have a highly partisan political consulting firm embedded in our supervisor of elections should be of concern to every voter in the county of Palm Beach. This is an extreme conflict of interest and a blatant misuse of our tax dollars. With that, I-
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm going to ask that you please maintain decorum in our chambers. Thank you.
Sir?
Hello, I'm Todd Buffington. I live in West Palm Beach. Thank you for your time this evening. Last I knew, our elected officials work for their constituents. This tonight is our tax dollars we're talking about, and you hold the purse strings. Your job is to manage the budget and those dollars, our dollars, not, last I knew, to allow the rubber stamping and drunken sailor spending that we see in this budget. Some of these budget increases are truly off the charts. Focused, as people have been, on the supervisor of elections. Since the 2020 election, Wendy Link wants to increase the budget by 90%. For those of you who aren't familiar with math, that's almost double. Line items specifically going up egregiously, wages and salary, 100%, wages and salary for early voting, which is no different than 2020 as far as I know. Are we going to have more early voting, aside from during a pandemic, going up 98%? Contractual services, up 600,000 to 5.1 million dollars. What, what outside vendors are we paying these numbers to? Election workers since 2020 are going up 2,200%. That's 22 times. Is there any explanation given? We need a line-by-line item explanation of where this money is going and why it is costing so much more year over year, and especially over 2020, which is like general election. Our data processing software expense is going up 280%. Now, if this is for VR systems, they're a non-certified third-party company that has unfettered access to our voter rolls and processes and reports the results of our elections. Why is this allowed to happen? This is going outside of our control and is handled by a third-party, non-certified company. And we know Wendy isn't spending a lot of time and funds cleaning our voter rolls. As of December of last year, there were over 42,000 voters, active voters on our rolls with undeliverable, in other words, invalid addresses. That's 4.5% of our active voter rolls that had bad addresses. And 8% of our voters on the Palm Beach County rolls haven't voted in 10-plus years. That to me says that they are not being cleaned adequately. In a meeting with Commissioner Baxter, she said that the commission typically just approves whatever the SOE asks for. So is that meaning that one person gets to decide how our elections were run, are run, and how much is spent on them? This seems ridiculous and with no checks and balances. With increases residents are experiencing in insurance, utilities, and cost of living, this egregious, egregious increases in budget are unacceptable.
Thank you very much.
Shawna Ostervitz, followed by Anita Pins, Cheryl Dunn, and Erin Atkis, Atkis, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and County Administrators. My name is Shayna Ostervitz, and I am the Executive Director of 1909. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, following my last presentation on June 13th, where I introduced 1909 to you all, and a request for a partnership to support homegrown startups and small businesses in Palm Beach County. 1909, which is named after the year Palm Beach County was founded, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to the development and growth of entrepreneurs in Palm Beach County. We currently provide business education, mentorship, and affordable workspace for a vibrant community of over 200 local entrepreneurs and small business owners. As a critical piece of the entrepreneurial ecosystem, we help position Palm Beach County as a hub of the business and industries of the future, and we create a more inclusive and equitable business landscape. Over the past five years, we have been providing local entrepreneurs and small business owners with the resources they need to succeed. We provide access to programming, such as weekly goal-setting, intensive accelerator programs, expert speakers and mentors, new skills training, and pitch events. Our mentorship programming not only provides local founders access to the expert support they need, but it also creates a platform for larger businesses in the county to invest in and give back to the community. Since I last presented, we have received the new impact numbers from our annual survey, which I'm very excited to share. The new countywide numbers are, 16 new businesses were launched and supported through our early-stage business accelerator program, with a total of 120 new businesses supported. Over 400 mentorship hours were provided to the founders in our community. 60% of the businesses in our programs are women and minority-owned. 37 million economic impact dollars was generated for Palm Beach County by 1909 businesses. 224 jobs were created and supported by 1909 businesses, and over $20 million in capital was raised by 1909 businesses. So the exciting part of all of this is that the businesses we support are thriving, creating jobs, raising capital, and growing. To meet their expanding needs, we are launching second-stage- To meet their expanding needs, we are launching second-stage scale-up programming to provide the resources and support for recruitment, fundraising, and legal needs that, of course, second-stage companies have. Through this program, we will help more companies scale up to the first $1 million in revenue. Our expansion to support second-stage businesses fills a gap in the current Palm Beach County entrepreneurial ecosystem. We need to continue our efforts throughout the county to create a sustainable business environment for more entrepreneurs and small business owners, and to continue to champion inclusivity and diversity in the entrepreneurial community to provide opportunities for underrepresented entrepreneurs. While we understand the millage adjustment at the last meeting, we would very much like consideration for funding. Your support will help us expand our reach and support entrepreneurs on a county-wide scale. Thank you for your consideration.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shana, you had mentioned, is that an economic study?
Yes, that is done by IMPLAN, which I'm not sure if you're familiar. I have the data. It's a leading economic impact data and analytical application, which serves economic needs.
And if possible, can you provide that to us, the commission?
Absolutely.
And, and potentially to staff?
Absolutely.
Now, I know when you came during the June 13th meeting, you're supposed to set up meetings with some of the county commissioners. Were you able to, to do that?
Yes, I was able to meet with so many of you, so thank you so much for all of your time.
Okay. I know that I've, I've had the chance to work with 1909, and I believe that this is an entity that should get the opportunity to be funded. I know today we're not, since we're decreasing the millage. But I believe that it's important to continue to create jobs and opportunities for small businesses. So, you know, I would love for, for 1909 to work with staff to see what can be done, if it's ad valorem in the future, or any type of other fundings that are available for them in the future.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Hi, I was actually one that had the privilege of touring your facility, and it was absolutely beautiful and amazing. And if I was just starting a business, I'd definitely want to be there. So I would support anything we can do to help support businesses that are trying to provide a place to thrive, especially when space right now for any business to rent or to even open or operate is astronomical. So you provide suites at a smaller space and a much more affordable price for a small business to even get started, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, back to you, Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. Anita Pins, followed by Cheryl Dunn and Erin Aktus.
Good evening. My name is Anita Pins. I live in downtown West Palm Beach and recently relocated from New York City. I came to comment on the increase in property taxes, not on the budget, which I did not receive with the notice. I was really astounded when I got the notice and saw that the taxes were going to increase by 15% if there was no change to the budget, but if the budget was adopted, the taxes were going to increase by 30%. And I was somewhat bewildered, because I thought, like in New York, Florida has a cap, state cap, on the amount that can be increased annually for homestead properties. Apparently, it's 3%. For non-homestead, it's 10%. So I was bewildered, but then I saw that, well, there's a loophole here, because it seems to not apply to public school or school board-assessed values. And when I took another look at my notice, I saw that, in fact, it was not the county, the municipality, or independent districts. It was the public school assessed value that was being increased, in my case, by 65%. So I guess what I need to know and what I'll make of my business, my business to discern following this meeting is what portion of the budget is actually being allocated to public schools? And in fact, I do hope that the public schools and the students in Palm Beach County will benefit from this increase. Because for me, it's going to be a hardship. I moved here because I thought that it was affordable relative to New York City, but in fact, if my taxes are going to increase at the rate of 30% per year, I will have to sell and relocate, and that will be one less affordable apartment in West Palm Beach. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sheri, can you kind of like just give us a 101 in regards to what are, what's our current millage? And what are we reducing the millage? And also, what we can and cannot control in regards to other municipalities or other taxing districts, please?
Sure. Our general countywide millage rate is currently 4.715, and we are decreasing it for FY 2024, the upcoming year, to 4.5 mils. So we are seeing a decrease. Our Jupiter, our fire rescue library will stay exactly the same, so it's a flat. But we have no control over the school district's millage rates or any of the cities. The South Florida Water Management District that's on all of our tax bills, those type of things do not fall under the county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moreno.
Erin, followed by Christine and Kathy Savage.
Can I give everyone something?
Staff will take that from you.
There's basically what everyone was speaking of. The budget is in here. There's a copy of the paper everyone was speaking about in there, so I don't know if you want to look at it now and follow along, if anyone else has anything to say regarding that. So, I'm started? Okay, start it over. I'm Mrs. Aktus, I live in Jupiter. I'm also the Secretary of the Florida Republican Assembly. I'm here to speak about people, not machines. So many of our families are by no means above middle class, and now more than likely are way below. We are hard-working class, and that's just what we do. And you saw me in action over the last elections. I'm gonna go to the meat of my three minutes. Your body, the seven commissioners, who are either elected or selected by the people of Palm Beach County, have come together this evening to vote on the tentative Supervisor of Elections 2024 budget. Due to the nature of this tentative hearing and the contract with ESNS, the election system that is operating our elections, it states that the availability of funds, the customers, I'm sorry, the consumers' performance and the obligation to pay under this agreement for subsequent fiscal years are contingent upon annual appropriations for this purpose by the Board of County Commissioners, yourselves. Please also refer to statutes 812.155 and 287.135, Florida statutes. It is clear that Palm Beach County Commissioners are the decision-makers and hold the power for the people to make serious decisions on the funding of our SOE's elections, discretion, and endeavors, whether it be by vote by mail, early voting, mobile van voting, ballot tracks, or a pilot beta testing AI program being implemented without the consent of the people we didn't vote and we have no knowledge of. In review of the current tentative Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections fiscal year budget, summary as following items would require further scrutiny, either due to excessive or outrageous costs, questionable need to run a fair elections, are as follows. In 2024, the total revenue, $34,786,078. It is a 30% hike in one year, $12 million bucks. I could go over every line, but I think some people have already covered. The contractual services are not specified. The security services are not specified. Election workers' rent polling locations have all been decreased. We have 947,898 active voters. We need polling locations on Election Day as a priority. The rent has increased. Communications, which we don't know what they are, have also increased. Postage increased. Promotional, not specific, $300,000. Printing and graphics also increased. We are way, we are in no way going green here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at this budget that's, the proposed budget for 2023, which is a non-election year. So if the budget for 2023 is $24 million, and what was provided to us, the 2024 core budget is $17 million. Now, next March, there's a presidential primary where you're going to have more voters who are gonna come out. So there's a budget increase for just the presidential primary that's gonna take place in March. And then you have a primary election that is next, we have a primary, which is next August. So you're going to have an increase in the budget. This year, we didn't have a presidential primary. So I'm not understanding kind of like, like there is gonna be an increase when you have elections. This year is a non-presidential election year where you just have municipal elections. So if we don't fund the Supervisor of Elections in regards to the elections that's gonna take place next November, our SOE would get in trouble by the state and potentially get removed if you don't fund it properly. So I'm trying to figure out exactly, Ms. Baker, are we, is this a, like, I guess the question is, do they, does the Supervisor of Elections have a different budget during election years versus non-election years?
Excuse me?
Yes. When she is preparing for the incoming year with the elections, there are certain requirements that she must meet that's dictated by the state. And we must provide her with sufficient funding to meet those requirements. All the funds that she does not expend at the end of the year are returned back to the general fund.
So if she doesn't meet those conditions that are set by the state, then she gets basically in trouble. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. And it's also not looking good on our county if she requests dollars and don't meet it because we didn't provide the adequate funding.
And then, like, our last Supervisor of Elections office, because, you know, the governor believed or, you know, that things were not administered properly, that person was removed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so if we don't fund it, then are we not providing, you know, the funding that are necessary for the elections that's taking place in 2024?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I had actually asked some similar questions, and so for everyone to understand, did the Supervisor previously receive some outside funding sources that she's no longer allowed to receive?
When speaking with the Supervisor of Elections, and I'm gonna look back at and ask Todd to come up, the last major election, she did receive some grant funding. It is my understanding she is not going to receive those same grant fund, that same grant funding. So yes, there is a deficit there, and we would be required, because the requirements were not repealed, and so therefore, we have to fund, provide her with sufficient funds to meet the requirements that the state is imposing.
And that's what I understood. The reason, because she wasn't getting grant dollars or outside funding, that is why such a large increase. Is that correct?
And if she receives funding, then she will not have to necessarily spend our ad valorem dollars, because we're gonna be looking for her to spend those grant dollars first. And as I stated, all the funds that she does not expend will drop to the bottom line, and it comes back to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Back to you, Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. Christina Raymond, followed by Kathy Savage, followed by Renee Hamilton and Sharon Wade. Please come up to the, oh, there you are, thank you.
Here I am, you just can't see me. I have to pull this down. Good evening. My name is Christine Raymond, and I am the Executive Director of Extraordinary Charities here in Palm Beach County. I am also proudly here tonight in support of a wonderful organization, organization whose board I sit on, Digital Vibes. And I'm here in support of something we all can agree on. I think everyone would agree that being able to move and being able to be out in the community and exercising is a huge benefit to Palm Beach County. So last year, in the Let's Move Initiative, that was one month long, Palm Beach County residents logged over 130 million minutes of physical activity. The funding appropriation request that's before us today is for Palm Beach County to make this a year-long initiative. I look at all the people in this room, and I think, how much happier everyone could be if we could just stand up and move for five minutes. Right, see, there you go. I didn't know if that was appropriate, or I would have said everyone should just get up and let's move. But first, I want to thank you all for all that you do for the nonprofit community, and thank you for supporting our activities, time after time. But I also want to thank you for consideration of funding a year-long Let's Move Initiative for all of Palm Beach County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Did you provide us a funding request yet, or?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Baker, do we have that?
I'm a board member. Let me turn around. May I ask the peanut gallery over here? To whom? I said, yes, they asked to whom? Oh, to whom? That's a very interesting question. Well, hopefully, someone else who's scheduled to speak can answer that on my behalf. I do not know to whom it was submitted. Fortunately, that's one of the things I'm blissfully ignorant of.
Well, I am glad you're here regarding Let's Move. I know that I had the chance to attend the Let's Move Day. It was great to see the young kids, and what I do hope is that we can take a look at the, the funding requests and then to see what are you asking, and so that way, we can work with staff.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
We'll look at the packet. I don't, I remember speaking to the American, the representative for the American Heart Association. Don't know if those two are direct and overlapping. But again, we were not, I did not include that as a recommendation to our packet as a new proposal. We do fund Digital Vibe. We work with him on a number of events and fund. But if this is a new source, a new expenditure, I did not include it. And if it is the Board's direction to do that, then that's another. We had a list of folks that wanted to come in and request funding. But after we reduced the millage rate, I have not included it at all. But I can, we'll continue to talk, and I did speak with the representative from the American Heart Association, and we need to just decide if those two tie together. And that's something I can bring back to you after the first of the fiscal year for your consideration, if that is the case.
I just would love to take a look at it, and so in that way, we can see, you know, what it entails and everything.
We're hoping the state also, the Senate, I'm hearing the Senate President is looking for healthier type of activities, especially people in certain neighborhoods, to keep them moving, and so I'm hoping the state also comes up with some revenue for it.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. We do have, and I recall seeing something for Digital Vibes in our, in our, because we talked about how their, how their van had a fire or some, some sort of damage. So I do remember that conversation.
But I think that's a little different.
Different than Let's Move. Okay. Thank you. Kathy. Kathy Savage, followed by Renee Hamilton.
Hi, my name's Kathy Savage. I'm a constituent here in West Palm Beach. And why does everything need to be funded by the taxpayers? Is there nothing that you won't consider funding? We're not saying that things shouldn't be funded, like the Supervisor of Elections. It's the exorbitant amount of increase, and we didn't really need it before. You know, we, we used to do elections not that long ago, and it was very simple, and it didn't cost a lot of money. But you're creating avenues, avenues for cheating. So I do not trust the elections, because all the, there's a lot of avenues there to cheat with your, your chain of custody. It's going through the post office. It's got big trays that are open. There's no- There's no, there's, both parties aren't present when counting. And the way to go ahead and take care of that is, let's see, if the ballots are not transported but are counted right there in the precinct on paper with both parties present, then we would have confidence in our elections. But the fact that we don't have confidence in our elections is really your fault, because all, all people, all people should, all people should have, excuse me, this is my time. All people, all people should have confidence in our elections, and we don't. And we don't have confidence in our elections, and we don't need these machines. We need, excuse me, you work for me, and, excuse me, you work for me, and my voice carries, so I'll go ahead and continue to talk.
Ma'am, I'm trying to speak to the other people in the audience right now.
No, I'm talking. You can do it on your time, not on my time.
No.
No, yes, yes. We don't have confidence in it. We want it counted on paper in the precinct. Then we can have, then we can have confidence in our elections, servant. You're all public servants, and you forget your place.
Ma'am?
You forget your place. You don't get to just spend money, and spend money, and let's take a look at that, and spend money, and spend money, and spend money, and have huge increases. You don't get to do that! We're telling you no, and you're doing it!
Where's, where's PBSO?
Where she's done.
Will you please ask her to leave?
No! No servant!
Next up, please, Renee Hamilton, followed by Sharon Waite.
Hi, I'm Renee Hamilton. I live in Loxahatchee, Florida. I have a couple of areas I'd like to just touch on briefly. One, the SOE, I would like to hand this pass out if it could come up to you guys. There's one for everybody. But it references and maybe answers some of the questions that Mr. Bernard had. It references 2020, which is an election year compared to 2024. And the total number of operating expenditures in 2020 was 18 million. And in 2024, we have it at 34 million. So in four years, we've increased it $16 million, which is almost double. So there must be something wrong in that component, and I understand that we have to improve processes and fix things, but double from 2020 to '24 is not realistic, because I don't think we went double from 2016 to 2020. I'm not sure. I don't have that information in front of me, but I did want to bring it to your attention. Mr. Bernard was asking about it being an election year and the increase, and I think it's relevant to compare it to 2020. So that was one item. The second item I wanted to bring up was about the library, was about the library. I do think that the extra $5 million is a little bit excessive for a library. Library is an area that you can decrease some of the expenditures by not increasing more excessive book buying and things. Yes, we need our libraries, but there are tons of books there every, already, and maybe we could cut back a little bit there. I would be more than happy to see $1 million of that go to the 1909 project that's contributing back to the county and the money that we need in the county. So it would make more sense to give them $1 million and take $1 million from the library, in my opinion. The other thing is, I live in Loxahatchee, and we have had a lot of issues out there regarding our roads. And I don't know where it falls into the budget, because I don't have that detailed information, but we need your help, because we have accidents out there every, every day on Northlake Boulevard, and it is creating a danger for the people that live out there. Lord forbid that an ambulance or a fire truck or something needs to get through when there's one of those accidents. It's almost impossible. So I just wanted to ask for your help in trying to help us, whether it's this meeting or future budget meetings, getting us the funding to get Northlake expanded, getting Seminole Prep Whitney done, and that 60th Street put through, to help the people out there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments. It has been coming up quite a bit with being able to get in and out of the Acre Ridge, Loxahatchee area. We are having some connectivity issues. So thank you for your comments, and I will save the rest of my comments for Commissioner comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd, I heard the library was mentioned. I don't know if I, if Doug is here. Can you kind of like just give us an overview of the budget of the library, just a quick synopsis, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Doug Crandall, I'm the Director for the Palm Beach County Library System. Funding for the library system comes primarily through a dependent taxing district, which is why it shows up as a separate line on your budget discussion this evening. Money raised through that district is solely for library services within the Palm Beach County Library District. The, so that money, if that mileage is reduced, that money does, is just simply not raised. It cannot be reapportioned to somewhere else. Also, the library district as a dependent district has to cover its own capital costs, it has to carry its own reserves, it has to do a number of things that the other departments and the general revenue are covered by through the general revenue.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Sir, could you just come on back up? Would you also explain to everybody that do you need a library card to pay to get into our libraries in Palm Beach?
No, a library card is not required to use library services. The only thing a library card is required to do is if you wish to borrow material and take it home.
So libraries are open to, free to everyone?
Our libraries are open free to everyone. The vast majority of our libraries, 14 out of the 17, are open seven days a week, only closed on holidays.
And you have more than books?
We have more than books. We're currently, we of course have activities. We have computers available, free Wi-Fi for the public. We also support a lot of county operations, including elections. And we also provide, you know, free services over the summer. For example, we have our Summer Lunch Initiative, for which we partner with the school district that provides free lunches.
Kids can come and get lunches, free lunches while they're there at the.
Children can get free lunches, yes.
And there's also activities and instructions on speaking English for, for foreign languages, from foreign languages.
Oh, yes. We also provide a lot of English as a second language education. Also, we are probably the largest computer training organization in Palm Beach County, teaching people from using a computer mouse through office all the way up to more advanced software.
Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. Can you tell us the status of your facilities, new facilities that have been built, upcoming facilities that are being budgeted for? That might help.
Sure, I'd be glad to talk about it. As I said, we have 17 locations spread across Palm Beach County from Toqueston, the north, through the center of the county to Western Boca, and then out through the western communities, Wellington, Acre Ridge, Royal Palm, all the way up to the shores of Lake Okeechobee, where we have three locations out there. We're currently in the process of building our 18th location called the Canyon Branch, which is located in Canyon Town Center in western Boyton. And we are, of course, looking at other opportunities to expand our service footprint. The current footprint was made possible through a voter bond initiative that was approved in 2002 that allows to expand our facilities up to their current footprint. And all current capital programs are funded through district money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, didn't we just also approve acquiring, is it, was it Highland Beach or Lantana?
We're currently in negotiation with the town of Hypolexo to potentially purchase a building there. That has not gone through yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Sharon Waite, followed by Paula Triana, Jane, and Jane Justice. Those are the last three cards that I have.
Good evening, all. I'm Sharon Waite from the Acre Ridge. Originally, the item that I wanted to talk about was the library, but that's been well covered. So I'll move on to Northlake Boulevard. If you don't travel that road between 4:00 and, say, 6:30, 7 o'clock, there's a stream miles long crawling, heading west. You can't get through. And what, what Renee was saying is true. No ambulance, no services could ever get through, because they're blocked all the way down for miles. It looks like something out of California highway area. That's what it looks like, that three hours there. And inner, the, some of the inner roads that we have in the Acre Ridge also is well blocked that it takes 10 minutes. I heard someone talk about last night at the Seminole Ridge High School, we had a, you had your engineer there, your road engineer, and talking about one lady couldn't make a left-hand turn for 10 minutes. We need help out there. And yet, everybody with all these other huge developments, they all want to use our roads that I pay for. I own my road, to the middle of the road, on both sides of me. And we pay dearly for building our houses and living the way we want to live, even if they're dirt, we don't care. However, that's really something that needs to be addressed, because if there was an accident, and there have been often, blocked even with just normal traffic coming from down here, heading all the way east, west, blocked for miles, you can't even see the end of the road, is that much traffic. So I just wanted to make you aware how bad it is in case you weren't. Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed mayor, county commissioners, and all. My name is Paula Triana. I'm the Wellness Promotion Manager for the School District of Palm Beach County, and I'm here to advocate for the year-round expansion of the Less Move Palm Beach County. I'm going to speak to you a little bit about the efforts that has been happening in the past five years, not from Digital Vibes and Less Move, but really advocating our student body. We're the 10th largest district in the nation, the fifth in the state of Florida. We have over 180,000 students with 23,000 employees. So we have a huge capacity, and we know that moving our body is so important for so many reasons, especially right now with the increase of mental health issues. We know that people need to get out and move, and our kids need to do it more and more. So we really are advocating for your support for your next fiscal year, to your contingency fund, to consider the Less Move 365. As a parent, I have two kids that went through Alamanda Elementary, which was our wellness charter mentor, our, our choice program. My two kids right now are at Dreyfus School of the Arts. But when I started as a wellness school, we had Digital Vibes come out and do so many things at this school. And it really just energized, brought so much passion to the students, brought it to my home, and I seen the great ability to impact students by promoting physical health. And so I really am here to advocate for the consideration of Less Move 365 for your upcoming contingency fund in your next fiscal year. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Well, that's sort of a soft spot for me. The day I took office, I said we needed to make sure we had the, the physical health of our children was a priority. So our, our hands can be a little tied on this, because I asked Administrator Burke about physical education in the school system, which is not our purview. Our, the, the school system budget is not our purview. But I am definitely in favor of anything that we can do to get our kids moving, and I don't know if the school district is working with another organization called Fit America that does also a, a physical education program. I know that there are several schools that are, are working with them. But, you know, we do have the opportunity, we have people in our area that want to do this, and I think we need to have, not we, but I think the conversation needs to be had with the, the school district, that physical education of our kids is really important, and actually, first thing in the morning is even more important than later in the afternoon. But, and it's not the physical education that you're getting because you're playing on a sport, you're, you know, you have a coach. It's the physical education that you have to get when you get to school, and I, you know, I'm so old, I remember having, wearing bloomers for, for gym, so it wasn't pretty. It is so important that our kids have physical activity, school, home, wherever it is, it is a priority. And I, like I said, we do not fund the school board, we do not, that is a separate line item on your tax bill. But I'm happy to continue discussions with Administrator, Mr. Burke. So that's really, I'm just commenting, I'm not questioning, but thank you very much for bringing that up.
Commissioner Bernard, then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say that, you know, like, the Board of County Commissioners, we move a lot, but Commissioner Moreno moves. And so when I heard the presentation, I was like thinking of Commissioner Moreno, because, you know, she is our Health and Fitness Commissioner, and so I'm glad that you're presenting this to us, and, you know, we're looking forward to working with you and potentially other partners in the school district to see how we can continue to keep our residents moving, because it's not just the students, but also our older residents, because it's important for us to move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you. As a mother of young children, I, I find moving very, very important for, for children. I think, you know, the county does an amazing job. We have wonderful parks and recreational areas for them. We have, I mean, unlimited services and programs. And to the point of a reoccurring theme I keep hearing from our residents is why, you know, there's a lot of programs that we seem to be funding. And when I start thinking about funding, I want to prioritize. I want to say, you know, are our roads where they need to be before we start adding on programs? Is our infrastructure where it should be? Have we paid for the necessities before we start tacking on more and more of these programs? And especially in my district, and especially after the town hall last night and listening to people, we have a huge gap of where's the money coming from? When I asked for 60th to go through, it has needed to connect as an east-west corridor for over 10 years. So I pause, because we have amazing facilities already and amazing places I love to take my children to. So I just would like us to take a second and just consider our, our roads and infrastructure and those priority spending items taken care of. And if we're going to start funding more things, let's make sure those are funded as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're back to the public comment.
Ms. Jane Justice.
Hello, hi. I'm listening to some of the comments here, and I'm all for healthy children and happy people and funded, you know, programs. I mean, who wouldn't be for that? But be honest, let's be honest, folks, the budget and raising the taxes on the people at a time like this is so detrimental. It's an economic disaster. You know the federal government is using economics to push the people down, and our only avenue is you. We voted for you, we voted for all of you, we helped you get elected, many of you, okay? Now, what happens, a lot of people here didn't even understand that the school board is a separate entity, okay? I was wondering myself where it was at first, okay? But now I've got it down. I know they want money every time you turn around. I know the taxes keep going up, and the people are tapped out. I want to ask, how many of you have gotten on one of your Palm Tran buses and rode around the county and got out and talked to them? I'm very concerned about the people that are here, are all here because they're promoting their program. But the fact of the matter is, is that the people that live here, who are really being tapped out now, they don't even know that this is going on, or they would be here, wouldn't they? They don't know this is going on. Who was this letter written to from the administrator, dear property owner? How many property owners, how many tenants? You know, the taxes come back down to the tenants also. They're, 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 they're being pushed and pushed, and people, my friends have been moving out of this county because of this situation for many years now. They're just up and leaving all the time. And meanwhile, we have a cultural problem here, because that you want $1 billion at a time like this, and who is here, who is here but a handful of us patriots to, to, to defend these poor people that don't know where they're going? They can't afford the food. Okay, so what happens when you raise the taxes? These things all result, transfer to mental health, losing jobs, theft, murder, divorce. It all transfers, okay? A bad economic situation, and we're heading for a collapse if we don't do something about it. Okay, so, yeah. I wonder how many of you have been to the sheriff's office? Have you been to the sheriff's penthouse office? Do you know how much he's paying for an office? The money for the sheriff's office, the school board, that doesn't apply in this situation, and the SOE are all out of control. And I think you need to get on a bus and go out and talk to the people. Talk to the people. And by the way, you better be speaking Spanish, okay? Because if you don't, you can't find a job here anymore. I don't know what's going on here. here. Where are the people? Where are the Hispanic people that live in this neighborhood about this? You think they're not concerned about this tax raise?
Thank you. Thank you.
Listen, I have so much more to say. I would love a meeting with any one of you. I've got the facts. I've been here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sheri, and I guess this is a question for you, Commissioner Marino, since, you know, we've been talking about this budget for months now, and, you know, are we increasing the millage on our residents?
No, we are decreasing our millage rate this year.
And Commissioner Marino, you took the lead in terms of trying to reduce the budget. Can you kind of like, if, yes, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for that question. Yes. When the budget came to us, there were a lot of, a lot of dollars. And we've actually, with our vote today and our vote in two more weeks, we will be effectively cutting our millage rate in the largest deduction in 30 years. We're doing that without cutting any services to our residents. We're doing it strictly from reserves. We, we have allotted almost the same amount of money this year into reserves as we did last year. And we need to have reserves because it is something that our rating companies do look at. We do need to keep AAA rated. We need to stay AAA rated because by doing that, if we have to borrow money, we get the best interest rates that we can. And I know a lot of people in the audience think that their taxes are going up. We are only one line item on your tax bill. There are many line items on your tax bill. If you live in a municipality, you will have taxes from that municipality. If that municipality does not give you police or fire, that is a line item that you get from the county. Your, the library is a separate taxing district. The healthcare district is a separate, separate taxing district. If you live in the north end of the county, you're going to get a line item from Northern County Improvement District. So, we are only one portion of that budget. But what we have done this year is lower the millage rate, the lowest millage rate cut in 30 years. So, for those of you whose taxes are going up, I would advise you to really pay attention to the different other line items on your tax bill. I know the City of Palm Beach Gardens lowered their, their millage rate also. I know the Town of Jupiter lowered their millage rate. The Town of Jupiter Inlet Colony raised their millage rate. So, we have no control on what a municipality does. But as a county, we are really being fiscally conservative with your dollars. But we haven't done it at the cost of services to our residents. So, that, Commissioner Bernard, is that pretty succinct?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And I'm happy when, when it comes time to make that motion. If you don't mind, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. All right. And you have some non-speaking cards.
Thank you. I do have four non-speaking cards. All are opposed to the budget, and it basically is based on the SOE. And one person said our proposed tax increase is over 50%. I'm opposed to the proposed budget. We are in times of uncertainty. What I do also want to comment on is, I know that there was a question brought up at one of our previous meetings. If you're buying a, a new home now, and that home was homesteaded previous, that previous owner was paying a lower tax. So, your house gets reassessed at the purchase price of your home, and that's how your taxes get assessed. It's not because our tax rate went up. It is because the value of your home, based on what the person that sold it to you was paying on their assessed value was versus what your new assessed value will be based on your purchase price. So, I'll just put my real estate broker hat on, because I've been, I was a real estate broker since 1996. And there is a, you have to sign a document when you close that says I am aware that my taxes may go up based on my purchase price. So, I, I can't address anyone in the audience who says their taxes went up 30, 40, or 50%. The only way I could probably address that, and you would actually have to talk to the property appraiser on that, is that your assessed value is different now as, as a new homer, homeowner than it was as the previous homeowner who was probably homesteaded. I mean, I can give that case. In my instance, the house that I bought, the folks that lived in the house before me didn't pay taxes because the gentleman had a, had honor, was disabled from the military. So, if I was going by their tax rate, they were paying nothing. I'm not paying nothing. So, I, but I signed a document that says I know that my taxes are going to increase because I'm a new owner, and my new assessed value is going to be X amount of dollars. So, I hope that also clears, clarifies for some people the difference between an assessed value for a previous owner and an assessed value for a new owner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And with that, we have no more cards.
Okay. Just a couple of things I want to clarify. One is sheriff is elected countywide, so everybody in Palm Beach County does vote for our constitutionally-elected sheriff. The supervisor of election is also, is a constitutional office that is elected countywide, so everybody has the opportunity to vote for their preferred candidate for supervisor of election. And my understanding is the state is responsible for cleaning the voter rolls, and they send that information down to the, to the supervisor of elections to implement. So, all right. Moving back to our board. Okay, we return to the board for discussion on countywide funds and proposed countywide millage rate. And this is the time we get to start making some motions. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Before we do the motions, I just, I know that Ms. Baker had mentioned the Jupiter Fire MSTU. Chief Kennedy, are you able to kind of like give us an update on that issue in regards to Jupiter? Or?
I turned my microphone off. Chief, if you want to touch on that, I'd be, I'd like to step out of this conversation.
Well, you know what? I can, what I can do is if you want to, I can speak to you after the meeting, so that way we can discuss it afterwards.
Absolutely. I was planning on making rounds with everybody as well, so that's my.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You want to start making some motions?
Sure.
Want to start, Vice Mayor?
No.
You don't have your book. You want to?
I'll make the first three if you want.
Want to do the first three?
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. The first motion will be to approve certain budget transfers and amendments for those countywide funds as more specifically set forth on pages nine through 15 of the September 7, 2023 public hearing budget document such transfers and amendments totaling
Sweet. Okay, motion. So, you've made a motion to approve certain budget transfers and amendments. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Commissioner Bernard, and we have discussion by Commissioner Baxter.
Just clarifying, Mayor, are we, because once we pass all these motions, we're done. Are we not going to have comments for our individual areas?
We typically don't, but we can have Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting if you'd like.
That was the time.
We can do it.
When it comes back to the board, it is for board discussion on countywide funds and proposed millage rate. So, this would be the time to have any discussions that you're going to have.
Well, is it a discussion on, on this, or is it a, is it a just?
It's about budgeting, and I can make my comments now if you like.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so.
Just, let me just state for the record. So, we have a motion and a second on the table right now with the clerk. Okay, good. Go ahead.
So, one of the priorities are, for my district that we, I had discussed with Rhodes, first meeting, I'm talking, wow, nine months ago now, that we had, it was about the priority for 60th. And so, when I started looking over the budget, it, and the five-year road program, 60th has needed to connect, which I had said previously, for at least 10 years now, between 140th and Seminole Pratt Road. And it's not even budgeted for A and E, for fiscal year 2024. And I was told by Rhodes that that would be approximately three, to be on the safe side, $3 million, just to get it started so we can move forward with that connection. And so, one of the comments to me in a, in our conversations was, where does the money come from? Because I don't necess, I don't want to take it, obviously, from reserves. But we do, the thought was one of two places, and I would love to hear back from my board. Since Palm Tran takes $34 million of our gas tax dollars, we could appropriate some of those dollars towards Rhodes, which I believe is a priority, which I was mentioning earlier, or to Administrator Baker's opinion, we could take it from contingency after 10-1. So, I have zero preference. I will leave that to the board. Just as long as we can get this road started, it is extremely important to my area and my residents. I'd be very grateful.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I guess, Mr. Ricks, if you're able to kind of like, I don't know that road very well, so if you can kind of like let us know where it's at on the road program?
Well, 60th going from Seminole Pratt all the way to State Road 7, it's a major east-west corridor. And our challenge is that's a very long stretch. And so, right now, we have, you know, you know, looked at, looked at design services from 140th to State Road 7 in terms of starting design here in the next couple of years. But the section that Commissioner Baxter is talking about, from Seminole Pratt to 140th, we, that right of way was given by Mento, and so we have the right of way in hand. But to start that process, we'll need some design funds to start that process. About a $25 to $30 million project. And so, you're talking $2 to $3 million potentially, if you want to start the design on, on that step. But the other section from 140th to, it was said, we have dollars in 25, 26 to do design for those sections. But overall, that, do the whole quarter from Seminole Pratt all the way to State Road 7, you're talking 80-plus million dollars. So, but that section, what, you know, Commissioner Baxter is talking about from Seminole Pratt to 140th, that's about $25 to $30 million potentially, in terms of our numbers. So, what she's talking about is that to start the process, starting the design, it'll take a couple of years, go through the design, and then, of course, then you got to come back for construction dollars. And that's a whole nother, another conversation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Does this impact any Commissioner's districts? I don't know if Commissioner Marino, the 60th?
No, but to, to add to this conversation, Northlake Boulevard, which is also my district, and, and Commissioner Baxter's district, is also a priority. And yes, that's true. We, it's, it's crazy how many people have Northlake Boulevard. I, I think the bigger question is really looking at our five-year plan and seeing how projects can be moved around. Because you don't want to do something in one district that penalizes another district. So, and I do see the need for 60th. It has been on the roadway plan for a long time. I do see the need for Northlake. That's been placed. And I do see that there will eventually be relief on Northlake when the Spine Road gets punched through in Avenir. And if West Palm Beach could ever come to an agreement on the future expansion of State Road 7, that would be another help for us on Northlake. But I, you know, I'm sort of, I am in agreement with Commissioner Baxter that there does need to be something done. But I think we have to figure out a way to reorder our five-year road plan and our, and our plans going forward. Because again, we can't do something that, that is to the benefit of one district that penalizes another. But if we could move 60th and Northlake up without penalizing somebody, I would like to see that happen. And I don't know where those dollars come from. I know we have impact fee dollars, and that's what they're for, is, is when we collect road impact fees from, from builders for road impact and to increase lane miles. So, where do we go from here?
So, I guess the question is, for me, is just, can we have a discussion, can we do some type of workshop or something that brings the five-year road plan, and then we can have a discussion regarding what we would like to move and how can we expedite it? And what I'd like to see, Mr. Ricks, is are there any possibility for us to, are any grants, any Tallahassee grant opportunities that are available, so in that way we can see what we can move and not move?
You're right on point. So, we'll, we'll take a look at that, because the board approved hiring three consultants about a month ago to look at grant writing. And so, we're on, hot on, on that trail. But on the question that Commissioner Marino about Northlake, we actually have budgeted basically three segments of Northlake that we got dollars for, from Seminole Pratt to, I think, Coconut. We've got basically dollars in a program designed to make that one big, large project. It's going to be about 30, 25 to $30 million. And then from Coconut near Avenir, the developer expanding Northlake from forest lane to six lanes. So, the next couple of years, assuming that construction gets started next spring, you will have Northlake going from Seminole Pratt to actually Avenir, sorry, State Road 7 be six lanes. The, excuse me. The challenge is that with all the development going at Avenir and also Mento Westlake, six lanes is not going to be enough. But we've got to do something. And so, we're going from where we're at now, definitely, Northlake is definitely a challenge from a quarter standpoint. So, in the short term, we're definitely going to get it to six lanes, and then we can, and see how that does and see what the traffic from that standpoint.
Just one follow-up, Mr. Mayor. So, if, if they're going to do work on Northlake?
Correct.
You know, at the same time, is it possible to also do 60th, you know, since, you know, the work is going to be done? So?
But the problem is that for 60th, we don't have design yet. The, the ones for Northlake, design is about 90% done. So, the design process takes, takes, takes a while. And so, that's our challenge.
Thank you.
Northlake has been in the road program for decades. 60th, a portion of it, we've talked about that, but it's never actually been funded. We have been speaking about going after infrastructure grants at the federal level to also assist us with some of these programs. We're, we, we are happy to bring this back to you so that the board can decide what the priorities are, and then what we need to move back. But what we are experiencing is significant increases in the cost of building these roads. And so, we're, we may have to have this conversation, not just on roads, but on our other capital program, because some programs are going to have to be delayed based upon the cost of delivering these facilities and roadways, and we just don't have enough money to do that. So, we're going to go after grants. We'll continue to work. Impact fees don't come close to paying for the impact. The proportionate share, when they receive, when they have to pay proportionate share, the developer pays their proportionate share for their impact. They now get credit against impact fees. So, you no longer get proportionate share and impact fees. And so, the actual revenue stream is significantly less than it used to be. And they can determine through a consultant, especially on traffic, what their impact is. They then stroke a check for their impact, and then they build. So, they don't have to wait for the infrastructure to be in place. So, those are the challenges that we, we are facing. And development is occurring significantly faster than what we project when we approve the projects. I want, Westlake is a prime example. They're going gangbusters, and they're pretty much 50% complete right now. So, you're feeling the impact of that traffic sooner than we anticipated.
All right. Commissioner Marino?
Just to follow up on Northlake, I do know that Avenir, the developer, is doing the roadway right now. And because they have heavy equipment on that roadway, I really hope everybody is being mindful of the fact that there are construction vehicles out there, workers out there, lane mergers out there. So, the, the powers that be, I mean, we can have policing out there. It is, it, Northlake is tough because we have several jurisdictions on Northlake. And I do know that Gardens has put out a, you are doing this speed limit, hoping to, to slow people down. that Gardens has put out a, you are doing this speed limit, hoping to slow people down. And I know the county has been trying to do some patrolling out there, too. So, I just want to caution folks that are driving on Northlake Boulevard, there is a lot of heavy construction on the roadway itself, so please take care of yourselves. That's my follow-up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you recognized?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, I guess, to just bring it to everyone's attention. So, when Westlake first went in, they were projecting it to be done in probably 20 years from now. It is now projected to be finished, thousands of more homes in less than six years. So, and, excuse me, Mr. Ricks was actually talking about putting, he's, I mean, the discussion of One Fortieth over to Sixtieth doesn't actually help with an east-west quarter. There's none that exists. So, there's not a bad road, there's not a poor road, there's nothing. It is just this space that people used to use as a dirt road with their trucks for years, that has now been closed off by gates. So, this road has literally needed to be there since, for three decades, and it has been on, we will not need to take, we already have the right-of-way, there are no driveways, there are no impacts to any of the residents in the One Fortieth to the Seminole Pratt, which is why I think it'll create that connectivity prior to the other section getting done. And it's already primed and ready to go, which is why I was asking to have these dollars in the '24 budget. Now, I do have a question. So, if we do a workshop and we approve this budget as is, does that mean the soonest we can get those dollars are in '25?
If the board gives direction to move forward, if you decide that you're going to push back some other projects and want to move this up to '24, that's, the board can definitely do that, we just reprioritize. Or the board can take it from other sources and place it in '24.
I say, why do we have to get rid of other, I think roads are, and to my point earlier, roads are a priority of taxpayer dollars, in my opinion, and maybe you might feel differently, more important than some other things. So, I'd really like to leave that to your discretion or contingency or whatever you would like to use, but knowing that this road is, it's literally a road, this is how people get to and from, and I think if you were to prioritize top three things we're responsible for, that'd be within them, roads, infrastructure, providing a safe egress for people, how to get in and out of their neighborhoods. The comments made last night at our Roadstown Hall was, they feel like trapped within their own neighborhoods, and that's a terrible feeling, because they have no way to get in and out. So, I just would like not to keep pushing this off until '25, because it has been needed for so long.
We will workshop.
But I do like the idea of the workshop, just budgeting-wise.
Well, as soon as we're done with the workshop, this board can tell me what roads to push back and free up those dollars, and then we'll go back and amend the budget. Or take it out of contingency, or if we can find grants, we can do that as well. Or wherever else the board deems should be reduced to funded.
Right. Vice Mayor Sacks, and then Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. Wait, Commissioners, you are singing my song. You really are. And thank you for recognizing that roads in North County affect those in Central and South County. Because I am fighting a fight right now, we are fighting a fight, on Atlantic Avenue, 441, and Lyons Road. And you don't think that affects people? Yes, I am glad that you recognize that. So, we have choices. Yes, we need more sources of income. We need to tap into the President's infrastructure bill, that I was speaking with our Congressman yesterday about, to get money for our roads here in the county. Because as you said so emphatically, people feel trapped, and they're unsafe, and I hear this every day. So, one, we get alternate sources of income, such as federal and state grants. Secondly, we have an excellent engineering staff that does its best to get things done when supplies are short. We don't have labor, but our engineers are trying the best they can. But the other thing that I know that you have mentioned, and I want you to remember, my fellow Commissioners, is that when we, as a board, vote for more development without infrastructure, we are trapping our own people in their homes. We are making our roads unsafe. And a road is like a river. It runs from your district, Commissioner Moreno's district, all the way down to the rest of ours, all the way down to Commissioner Woodward and myself. Roads affect every person in this county. If I could ask you, Mr. Ricks, how much, how long do we have to wait for an intersection light at Atlantic? And I know this answer, it's going to come quick, don't worry. Atlantic and Lyons Road, sir. How long will we have to wait for that light by the Delray Marketplace?
It's going to take over a year because of supply chain issues, because you've got to design it, and then you've got to wait for the supply chain to get the actual mast arms, which are a long lead, and also the controller box. And so, if I had the design right today, it'd take you nine months to get the product in the ground.
Okay, one year for a light?
Basically.
On Delray Marketplace, Atlantic and Lyons.
That's correct.
So, we got to wait. And what we can do is pull down those federal and state grants, and maybe have smart development and not overdevelopment, so that the people who live here today are not suffering from roads that are not ready for all the people who want to come to this county. And thank you, Ms. Baker, for doing everything you can, and thank you to our engineer, and thank you for my fellow Commissioners, for recognizing how serious it is that we have to maintain our infrastructure and promote our infrastructure, grow our infrastructure, before we have overdevelopment of residences that are choking the people who live here today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Woodward, you recognize, and Commissioner Moreno?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I spent a long day, my voice is a little hoarse. Thank you, Commissioner Baxter, for bringing this up. I would prefer the workshop before we were to vote on something like this. One, I am in the extreme south of the county, and I'm not familiar with all of these roads, and I would like to have, I'm very visual with this.
You can come up, I'll take you around.
Yeah. Come south, and I'll take you around. Part of the workshop, I would like, I've had a lot of conversations about impact fees and what concurrency has done to us building roads and the changes that that has caused, and us being able to actually update our road plan, including what state and county and city roads are involved in all of this. Because State Road 7, I'm on the TPA board, had no idea how contentious that was until I came up here and like built the road, and what's the problem? So, apparently, there's a very large problem with this. But for us to have a better understanding, some of our priorities may need to be reordered, not that we don't build some of these roads, but because of development that has occurred versus development that's approved, because that's been a lot of my questions. We have projects that come to us that maybe it's a slight change, and traffic was approved 15, 20 years ago, and it's not been built. And then we have projects that were approved five years ago, and they are built. So, some of this needs to, you know, we need to have an updated overview of what we're doing, what's prioritized and why. And a lot of that has to be in areas where people are living. Westlake is a prime example. They've built a lot quicker than we anticipated, so this may be an area that we should move them up. But to your point, not to the detriment of other areas. I'm in the urban suburbent here, I knew what I was getting when I moved to the city, I have a lot of traffic, it does not make me happy, and I know that people who are living in areas where traffic is catching up to them, I feel their pain. And with Mayor Weiss and traffic lights and technology, hopefully, some of this can be made better, separate issue. But as far as us voting on something like that, for today's budget, I would not be comfortable with that. I'd prefer to have a workshop, and if it comes to reorganizing or reprioritizing to move that road up, I would support that, but not at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think we can wrap this up and then vote on our motion, but I think what the consensus of the board is, that we need to revisit our five-year road plan. And we do the same thing with the TPA, where we move things around, priorities change. And I think that it's important to do this and find where we can move something around, so maybe we can move Sixtieth up and, you know, finish, and as you said, Mr. Ricks, I know Northlake is in the process of getting four-lane from Pratt, Seminole Pratt to Coconut, I believe, and then six-lane the rest of the way. And also, I think we need, as Ms. Baker said, I think we also need to look at our capital improvement projects budget to see what projects, maybe there's a prioritization in that, too. So, I think a workshop would be great for that. I am with Commissioner Baxter, I mean, Commissioner Woodward, on not setting aside dollars for this, because I think once we do a workshop and we look at the five-year road plan and we readjust priorities, we can do this in a finite way that doesn't hinder or hurt any other project that's on the list. Commissioner Baxter, you okay with that?
More than okay with it, and a slight suggestion, because I heard you and Commissioner Sacks, and I think it would be a great idea if during, when we do, when we're hearing about new projects, housing going in, maybe a certain circumference of projects that have been put in, based on roads, and brought to our attention, have all the roads that have been approved based on that building, have they been constructed? And their timeline, before we just keep approving more and more density without the roads existing. I think that'd be a wonderful thing to have during presentations, when they come before us, to get approved one way or the other, before we just keep approving more. But yes, I do like a workshop, I love the idea of hearing about impact fees and prop shares, I love the idea of reprioritizing, looking at road projects and capital projects, and seeing where the priorities lay. And I just, you know, having these infrastructure problems, I'm sure it's not just my district, it's all of ours. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I guess I forgot, you know, Nick Brown was here earlier, and, you know, he's our Palm Tran ambassador, and I did take the ride on Palm Tran, and I was with Mr. Forbes on that. And I know for me, in regards to this discussion, you know, I am not in support of using Palm Tran as a way to address this need, and I believe that this, the board have heard Commissioner Baxter's issue regarding Sixtieth Lane, and we will do everything in our power to move it up, or if we have to use any other funds to address it. And I look forward to that discussion to make sure that your residents get taken care of Commissioner Baxter. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're to Commissioner Baxter, and then Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks.
I think you just said Kamala.
Oh, okay. Vice Mayor Sacks?
Thank you. And you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Baxter. Every time we have a request for more development, we need to look at our infrastructure first. Because the number-one complaint and issue and problem in this county, as in many other counties, we're not the only, is traffic. My God, it's choking us to death. So, we have to have smart development, and we have to look at these impact fees, and yeah, I would be up for a workshop. And I would also be up for a review of every development that comes in, Commissioner Moreno, as you were talking about in your district, every development that comes in, how is it going to affect the traffic flow of the areas surrounding that development? Not just for people coming in and out, going to work and school, but also for our firefighters to get there. I've had instances where people have died because the firefighters couldn't get there in time, not because they were too far away, they couldn't get through the traffic. So, yes, if we expect to grow as a county, as a successful people, we need to get control of our traffic. And yes, I am absolutely in for a study, a review. I don't believe that we need to cut other areas, but I think we need to be smart about it, get funds from other, look, the big infrastructure bill that everybody talks about in Washington, we got the infrastructure, we got the needs, we need them. All these, these funds that we can tap into, and then let's have smart development, so that we can, we continue to be a paradise, and not a trafficlocked suburb of some other county. Thank you for bringing that up, I'm all for it.
So, just to wrap this thing up and we take a vote, we do have a motion in a second. Concurrent was removed from the state of Florida a number of years ago. So, and in every application for development, there is a traffic report, an engineering report on the impact of traffic that's included as part of the packet. But I agree, it's a discussion we should have, and to understand impact fees, to understand prop share, to understand how they all work together, to understand what we, as a board, have jurisdiction over. We have many municipalities in this county, 37 of them, 39, 39, sorry, 39, sevens look like nines tonight, in this county, that we have no jurisdiction over. We also have special districts that we have no jurisdiction over, and their roadways and their development. So, it's a complex issue, and it's something I think we all can agree that it's something we need to talk about. But there's also a lot of nuances to this discussion, and so, it does rate spending a few hours on. All right. With that, Commissioner Baxter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to our workshop, to what the mayor was saying, the concurrency, to clarify legally, we can't deny a project being done because of concurrency being in place, is from my understanding, and I'd like that a part of it. But also, it doesn't say we have to approve an increase in density for projects that come before us, or am I wrong?
I don't, no, you're not wrong. Comp plan, it's been my understanding, my non-legal training, but the board has the most discretion at comp plan time. So, when we come back with this, we'll work with the county attorney's office as well as planning. I want to lay out for you what we, a little history, when the legislation changed, how it has impacted us, and what are your options at comp plan time, as well as zoning, but your most discretion is at the comp plan.
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second, and this is to approve certain budget transfers and amendments for those countywide funds, specifically set forth, so that on pages nine through 15. All right. Any further discussion?
No, that's for next.
On that item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't see any opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Next.
Mayor, may I make the motion to adopt Palm Beach County countywide tentative millage of 4.5, which is 6.94% over the rollback rate of 4.2080, and the countywide voted debt millage rate of .0188.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, we have a second by Commissioner Baxter, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero.
And I will close this out with a motion to adopt Palm Beach County countywide tentative budgets of 6.6774, sorry, $6,677,466,684.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, we have a second by the Vice Mayor, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. All right. We will return to the board for discussion on the Library District. Go right ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adopt Palm Beach County Library District tentative millage of 0.5491, which is 12.06% over the rollback rate of 0.4900, and the Palm Beach County Library District voted debt millage rate of 0.0108.
Thank you. And second, we have a second from Commissioner Barnett, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero.
Further, Mayor, I'd like to file a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Library District tentative budgets of 197,827,753.
Thank you. We have a motion by the Vice Mayor Sacks, we have a second by, we have a second by Commissioner Barnett, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay, moving on. Return to the board for discussion of the Municipal Taxing District, MSTD.
Mayor, I'd like to have a motion to adopt Palm Beach County's MSTD tentative Mayor, I'd like to have a motion to adopt Palm Beach County's MSTD tentative budget of $145,138,422.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sachs, a second by Commissioner Moreno to adopt the MSTD budget. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. All right. We're returning to the board for discussion of the Fire Rescue, MSTU.
Mayor, I'd like to file a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, MSTU tentative millage of 3.4581, which is 12.03 percent over the rollback rate of 3.0868.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sachs.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Baxter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero.
Mayor, it's my honor to have a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, MSTU tentative budgets of $809,745,835.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sachs. We have a second by Commissioner Barnett. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Okay. We will return to the board for discussion on the Jupiter Fire, MSTU.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire, MSTU tentative millage of 1.7879, which is 7.22 percent over the rollback rate of 1.6675.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. And we have a second by Commissioner Barnett. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire, MSTU tentative budget of $27,272,921.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. We have a second by Commissioner Barnett. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. We return now to the board for discussion on the MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adopt Palm Beach County MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund budget of $15,588,277.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Moreno. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Moving on. Adoption of the tentative aggregate millage rate.
Mayor, I'd like to have a motion to adopt Palm Beach County a tentative aggregate millage of 6.2936, which is 6.88 percent over the rollback rate of 5.8887.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sachs. We have a second by Commissioner Barnett on the motion to adopt tentative aggregate millage rate. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero.
And with your permission, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, it's okay. I'll second that motion.
I figured you would.
I think our work is complete here. But before we leave, before we leave, I want to wish Commissioner Moreno safe travels. She'll be embarking on a bit of a journey, so we want her to be safe and Africa. Okay. With that, our work is completed. Oh, Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things, you know, just want to thank staff for working on this budget. This was a difficult budget to work on and thank you for bringing this to a landing. And, you know, to our residents of Palm Beach County, from the county's perspective, you know, we lowered the millage and we're hoping that, you know, that does help our residents. And finally, to our county employees who are here, who are watching, we just want to say thank you for the work that you do for the residents of Palm Beach County. And also, you know, we're very happy that we're able to provide a six percent across the board to pay increase for our county employees. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. All right. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with the very.